And posted on the municipal bulletin board on December 27th, 2021. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have the minutes of May 23rd to approve. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I missed, I skipped over a presentation. We don't have any presentations, but I do have a statement that I would like to read. And Anthony, I'll give you this when I'm done. Prepare to put into the minutes. Burnsville's motto, small town, big community, is most powerfully felt in our historic downtown area. It is our community's main gathering space. Unfortunately, years of commercial highway sprawl and the growth of online retail present real challenges to the area. After considerable public outreach and planning, the borough reached a significant step along the road to revitalizing downtown. In January 2022, the borough signed an agreement with Advanced Realty to implement a redevelopment plan for the Quinby Lane redevelopment area. Under our agreement, Advanced Realty was given time to reach out to willing property owners to purchase land in the area to implement the plan. Some property owners expressed a strong interest in selling, while others passed on offers, at least for the time being. Some of the tenants of the retail sites raised concerns about their leases and ongoing businesses. Through it all, the borough was kept apprised of the progress and issues related to the property acquisitions. As the time allowed under the developer's agreement for property acquisition is set to expire, the borough has decided to extend the time. This decision was made after listening to the owners, tenants, residents, and the developer, and in consideration of the progress of some negotiations, as well as the uncertainty in the economy. The borough will continue to work with Advance to reach agreements with property owners in the Quinby redevelopment area. The borough's goal is to create an environment whereby mutually beneficial agreements can be reached. Simply stated, we are committed to our vision for the future of the downtown and to making it work for our commercial property owners, their tenants, and all entities who are committed to the borough. We would like to take this opportunity to address a few misperceptions that have developed. First, the borough is not forcing any property owner to sell their property, and the approved redevelopment plan does not authorize the use of eminent domain for redevelopment purposes. Second, the borough has no involvement in and takes no position on relationships between landlords and tenants in the redevelopment area. The desire of every elected official in the borough is to have a vibrant, attractive center of town that benefits us all. In closing, the borough will continue to work to revitalize our downtown, and will do so hand in hand with our existing commercial property owners and all our community stakeholders. So hopefully that will get in the record and will put some rumors to bed, okay? Anybody questions? Hammers?
Thank you.
I hope so, thank you.
Okay, moving on. It is now time for our public section. So if anyone from the public would like to be heard, where do they come up to? Here?
Just in the front, so they're kind of, yeah.
Just in the front, so the hour can pick you up. Just come forward if you're in the audience and give your name and address. If you're on Zoom, either use the icon, the hand icon, or wave at Anthony and hopefully he'll see you. And please limit your comments to three minutes, and he will be timing, so that we know, make sure everybody has an equal time to speak. So would anyone from the public wish to be heard at this time? Come on up.
Aye. I'm Mary Alonzo, I'm representing Woodham Real Estate. And we own 7375 Anderson Hill Road, and also 59 Wardens. And I just wanted to know, are we grandfather under this new ordinance? Or do we have to? Because it looks like there's zoning changes.
Ah, that's, that, is that for the affordable housing zoning? Is that what you're looking at?
I meant to return to your turn, I'm sorry.
Well, apparently there's a new ordinance coming about, and it says it's going to be approved for final site plan and subdivision.
Did you get a letter?
Yeah, sent a word to Adam.
Was that CNE for five CNE? No.
It says the A13 zone or something?
Yeah, I think that's the affordable housing.
Yeah, that's, that just affects.
Specific properties.
It's not affecting property at all, unless you want.
Even a lawn us?
That's all property owners within 200 feet with zoning change.
Okay, then we're not.
It does not specifically affect your property at all.
Yeah, thank you. Good point, though. Thank you for bringing that up, because I think some other people may have gotten the same impression that it was a blanket rezoning, but it's only two, four specific properties that will change, so.
Really?
Yeah.
And we're required to send that notice out of any property that's challenged, right?
Yes, anybody that's within a certain distance, so that they know. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
You can say.
Take a cookie on your way. Anybody on Zoom or?
We have Mark Corleano on here. He can unmute.
Okay. Mark?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Hey, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor, nice to see you. Council, nice to see you all as well. My name is, by the way, if you have cookies there, I'm sorry I'm not there in person. My, my name is Mark Corleano, or Corleano. I am the principal and owner of the property at 30 West Street in Burnsville, which is a rental property. In the interest of full disclosure, I am also the Borough Council President in P-Pac Gladstone, so you should know that. But I'm not here on Borough Business. I'm here to respectfully ask the council's consideration on something that affects my property. So the property at 30 West Street has been there since 1963. I acquired it roughly nine or 10 years ago. It is a six-apartment rental, underground parking, and a detached garage also. And the reason I'm asking your consideration is because every year, as there should be, there is a rental compliance inspection. And that rental compliance inspection is ably done. You have some very capable people working in the borough. Renee, who is now your zoning officer, was probably one of the best inspectors I've ever worked or I've ever seen work. And her new replacement, Riaisha, just recently did an inspection, and I thought she was, did a very fine job and was very well trained. She seems very capable. I'm not calling to complain about anything regarding the inspection process or my issues with the inspection. What I would ask your consideration on are the fees. So whether the council knows it or not, the borough's fee for an inspection is $150 an apartment. So I, every year I write a check to Burnsville for $900 for the inspection. The inspection takes about, to be honest, about five minutes per apartment. And I don't really make all that much money on this property, net, net, net. And to pay $1,000, nearly $1,000 a year in fees for rental compliance inspections, in my opinion, seems onerous. I'd like to think it was a mistake when the price was set. But then again, I also understand some of the complexities that Burnsville has to deal with, which was with respect to some of their other rentals. I'm well aware of the market in the area. I'd like to think I'm one of the better property owners in keeping my property very nice and respectable, but I know there are some who perhaps don't hold their properties to the same standards, and it may require more in terms of inspections and compliance. In any case, I am asking the council to look at the fees that are charged and perhaps reconsider them. As we both know, I serve on the council here in P-Pac Gladstone. We're supposed to keep our fees equal to what it actually costs us to perform those services, be it construction or be it fees like this. And I do feel that the $150 per apartment, or $900 in my case, is a bit expensive. I don't mean to use my own town as an example, but in P-Pac Gladstone, we charge $100 for the first apartment and then $50 for every apartment thereafter. So as you could see, my fees, if my building was in P-Pac Gladstone, my fees would be substantially less. In any case, I'm here only because I would respectfully ask the council to revisit those fees and see what they might do. I do think they're out of line for what is being performed.
Thank you, Mark, and we will refer that to the Housing and Zoning Committee. So Diane, if you can bring that issue back.
I can't. Can you send something in writing, please? And then I'll bring it up with the Housing and Zoning Committee.
You're talking to me, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry. Who am I speaking to?
Diane Greenfield.
Okay. Yeah, Diane is a council person, and she's our representative to zoning.
And Diane, I guess I know your name, and I know where to get your email address, and I will drop you a note.
Perfect.
Diane, I'm also, while I'm on, I'm just going to let you know, again, respectfully, I would ask you to pass on to your secretary in that department, when they mail out the applications every year to be filled out, they mail out a five-page form for every apartment. So when I return my application, I'm returning over 30 pages of paper. It's a lot of paper, and honestly, it's unnecessary. I developed the form for our town. It's one form for as many apartments as you have, and it really provides the same information. So I will, I will attach a copy of that. Maybe you could pass that along as a friendly suggestion on how to streamline all the paper that's been flowing around.
That'd be terrific.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for listening.
Have a good night.
You as well. Save me a cookie.
Yeah, I have them every meeting. You're welcome to come get them. Is there anyone else who wants to be heard? You see anybody else?
I'll scroll up and down here. Don't see anybody right now.
Okay, we do have another open session at the end of the meeting, so if anyone wants to speak then, you have another opportunity. If not, I will close the public hearing time.
I, I'm, I'm so sorry. I was trying to unmute myself. Hi, this is Marian from Pine Ridge on Pine Street in Burnsville. We are affordable housing, and I was trying, actually, Jack Pigeon had returned my call. I guess I had come down to town for the borough call. I didn't see any maps or overlays. I just want to know if this ordinance that's being amended, will that affect Pine Ridge at all?
No, it will not.
Okay.
Yeah, the question was, if the zoning overlay would affect Pine Ridge? And the answer is, no, it would not. It's only affecting these specific lots and parcels that are listed in the ordinance itself.
And I'd just like to know that I did try to return your speaker's call.
He did. Yeah, we, we played phone tag, I think, a little bit, so thank you very much.
Yeah, that was, our attorney said he did try to return your call. I think he left a voicemail.
That is correct.
Jack Pigeon. So yeah, no, it will not affect.
Okay, so it's just for those, it wasn't very clear in the documents we received which, what exactly the properties were that.
Yeah, that, you probably got that because of the property. There's one property on Burnsville Ave, and anyone within 200 feet of that property got a notice.
Okay. Okay, very good.
It won't affect yours. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have Abby, who's West Amanda.
Abby? Okay, you want to unmute?
I am, I believe I'm unmuted.
Yes.
Okay. I was just wondering, I was only about three minutes.
Give us your full name and address, please.
Abby Jocknowitz, 42 Prospect Street, Burnsville.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I, I was only about three minutes late, and I'm not sure you sent like two letters, pretty serious-looking, all sorts of lawyer speak, and I don't remember hearing anything about, in your meeting, this reference to any of this stuff in this letter. Did I miss it?
Are you talking about the zoning overlay?
The zoning affordable housing.
Yes, that will not affect you or your property. It's only, there's one property on Burnsville Ave that's, that we're zoning as affordable, but we.
So you're not, you're not changing the parking lot on Mount Airy Road?
Oh, yes, we are doing, that's another property that will be zoned for affordable.
Right, well, that touches my, my yard.
Oh, you're on Mount, oh, you're in the back of Prospect, right behind it.
So what happens in the back of everybody's house on that property as far as like building, paving?
It would have to go to the, it'll have to go through the normal process and have the appropriate setbacks, as if any other building was erected on a parcel of land that was buildable in this town. So it will have, I believe, a full public hearing in the planning board?
Yes, they will apply for same-time approval.
Yes, so it'll go through the planning board like any other buildable lot, and it will adhere to all zoning and setbacks as outlined in both the ordinance, as well as our zoning overlays for the borough.
So you, so you can't, you can't say for sure whether they're going to pave all the way behind everybody's yard, or you don't know, or you're just not.
We just don't know until they apply and send in the plans to the planning board for review, which, which I sit on. This is Chad Cosm and McQueen speaking. So that would go to the planning board for review, just like any other buildable lot in the borough.
Yeah.
So will we get? Yeah, so will you send out like more letters so we can at least chime in?
So when it's officially being heard at the planning board, there will be the same notice that will happen within 200 feet. So you'll get another notice that it's being heard at the planning board at that time.
Okay, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Yeah, those letters are very difficult to understand sometimes.
Yeah, it's steep, also.
I know. Yeah, you're required to do it, and it has to be in a certain format, so yeah. Anybody else?
Not seeing anybody in the participants' window with their hand up.
Okay.
I don't see anybody that I can see here, so.
All righty, so I will close the public hearing time, and we will move on to ordinances. And I will open the public hearing on Ordinance 2022-1918, Supplementing and Amending the Borough Land Use Ordinance to amend the AH3 Zone Requirements and Adding Two Additional Affordable Housing Zones. And this is what people were asking about. This is just adding one spot on Burnsville Ave and the Ammerman Lot on Mount Airy. Yes?
Yes, Mayor. And the planning board did review this ordinance and found it not inconsistent with the master plan. I know it's a double negative, but it's still in there, you know. But it did pick up several hypothetical errors in the report. So I would ask that member of the council move to amend the ordinance to reflect those changes that are amended by the planning board. None of them are subsidized, so I think you can still act on the ordinance as amended.
So I'll move as amended. Ordinance 2022-1918, I'm final reading and adopt as published.
I'll second.
And then if you just have a voice vote on that amendment, then the public hearing will be on the ordinance as amended.
So we just need a voice vote on the amendment?
On my motion to amend.
All in favor on the motion to amend?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, do we have to close the public hearing first? Because you opened down.
Yeah, the public hearing will be on the ordinance as amended.
Yeah.
We just continue the public hearing. Like I said, none of them are subsidized.
Okay, understood.
Okay, so would anyone in the public wish to be heard on this ordinance?
As amended.
As amended.
Don't see anybody.
All right, then I will close the public hearing. Diane, you want to do that one?
I move to pass Ordinance 2022-1918 as amended on final reading and adopt as published.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Can I have a comment on it before?
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, listen, I appreciate the comments that have already come from the public. I just wanted to maybe state just some feedback I've heard from the community. I think we all know we have to meet our affordable housing requirements from the state, and that very clearly, we would rather choose where the affordable housing requirements are versus have them sort of imposed on us. And I recognize that the council, previous councils have spent a lot of time thinking about the location, and there's a lot of advantages to specifically the Ammerman Lot being close to the downtown area. I just heard a lot of feedback about losing parking in the downtown area, which obviously, this is a lot that I know maybe doesn't have a lot of utilization, but is utilized at times for community events. And so I just maybe wanted to make a public record that as we consider future development plans, and as we look at Quinby and other downtown revitalization efforts, we just keep that in the back of our heads, that we're losing a significant amount of parking through Ammerman, and that we make sure that we keep that consideration there in our future development plans.
Thank you. Anyone else want to comment? I think, hopefully, as we do redevelopment, we'll add parking, so we'll make up those spaces.
And I just wanted to add that feedback reflecting what I heard from the public.
Yes.
And the other thing, I'm hearing a lot about timing, you know, so timing is not imminent. These things take time, so.
Yeah. I think the water company has to do something there first, don't they?
Yeah, they're saying they're putting new main lines in.
Yeah.
They're going to go through there first. And RPM has to get planning board approval and have to apply the max credit, so it comes in and brings it as I can add to the line.
Right, yeah, it will take time. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ambeline?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. McReedy?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. Ramaro?
Yes.
Ms. Amer?
Yes.
All right, I will open the public hearing on Ordinance 2022-1919 concerning the procedures for submission and approval of final site plan and subdivision flats and supplementing and amending Article 9 entitled Site Plan Review and Article 10 entitled Subdivision of the Borough Land Development Regulations. Would anyone, actually, can you just give us a quick?
Yeah, this is purely administrative ordinance. It was requested by Frank.
From the planning board, yeah.
No, from the planning board. It's just updating it, and it's the things that have to be submitted with final site plan.
Okay. You discussed this in planning board?
The planning board did report back, but it hasn't said it came from the planning board originally, and they did report it back that it's not inconsistent with the district.
Great, all right. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this ordinance?
Don't see anybody.
Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Mr. Ramero, would you like to do that one?
I move Ordinance 2022-1919 concerning the procedure for submission approval.
I have to read the whole one?
Oh, don't read the whole one?
No, just that one sentence. I move to pass.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I move to pass Ordinance 2022-1919 on final reading and adopt as published.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Amer?
Yes.
Mr. Ramaro?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McReedy?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Ambeline?
Yes.
I will now open the public hearing on Ordinance 2022-1920 and Ordinance Setting 2022 Salaries and Hourly Rates for Non-Contractual Employees. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this ordinance?
Um, I'm, 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 no, I don't see anyone.
All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any comments, questions?
Good work, Tom.
Yeah, I'll let you move that one.
Okay, I move to pass Ordinance 2022-1920 on final reading and adopt as published.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ambeline?
Yes.
Ms. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. McReedy?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. Ramaro?
Yes.
Ms. Amer?
Yes.
All right, do you want to move the next one?
Sure, just a comment before I move, if that's okay, Mayor.
Sure.
So again, thanks to Renee for identifying a need for improvement of language. And Tom, yeah, I guess I'll make a global statement to all borough employees. These aren't exactly the kinds of things that we want them to bring to us when they see something that's not in the spirit of what we're trying to do. Let's just not follow the law, because it was written a certain way. If we can follow the spirit and reword something to make it better, we should always do it. So with that, thank you to Renee, and I'll move to.
If I can interrupt, I'm sorry. The motion is actually to continue the public hearing on the ordinance.
That's right.
Until the July 11th meeting, but we know further notice of publication.
I do like the new language, though. I'll move to table 2022-1921 to July 11th, meeting 2022 council meeting against 7:00 p.m.
I'll second. You need those buzzers, like a damn.
Yeah, roll call.
Ms. Amer?
Yes.
Mr. Ramaro?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McReedy?
Yes.
Mr. Greenfield?
Yes.
Mr. Ambeline?
Yes.
I will now open the public hearing on Ordinance 2022-1922, Creating a Department of Finance and Clarifying the Duties of the Positions Within the Finance Department, Supplementing and Amending Section 2-10 of the Borough Code entitled Chief Financial Officer and Renaming That Section Department of Finance. Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this? No one?
No one. No.
Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And again, thank you, Tom, for kind of putting this structure in place. I think it helps us get everything organized a little better and a lot more job sharing with our small staff, so. Mr. Finance?
Sure. I move past Ordinance 2022-1922 and final reading and adopt as published.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ambeline?
Yes.
Ms. Greenfield?
Yes.
Ms. McReedy?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. Ramaro?
Yes.
Ms. Amer?
Yes.
All right, so now we are going to table Ordinance 2022-1923. And is this the correct language, Jack? Are we good on that?
Just to note on the record again, it's to continue the public hearing on the ordinance to build in July 11th meeting, and we know further notice of publication.
All right.
Jack, can I just ask a clarifying question before it officially gets tabled, please?
Sure.
Knowing, I believe this property is for sale and the trying to do is to accommodate sale.
No, it's sold.
Oh, it is already sold?
Yeah.
Then never mind my question. My question.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. No, this is five C, this was the generally.
Yeah, it's right across. So I guess I'm wondering if.
I'm thinking of, he wants to convert it back.
If it can stay flexible, to be either commercial or residential. Instead of, because I, I'm looking at it through my lens if I was trying to sell it.
We're just moving the zoning line.
Okay.
So we're not creating, it's not like the affordable housing lots that we're zoning. You know, we can't, it would be spot zoning if we did that.
I understand.
Yeah, old business is including this being, he wants to convert it back to residential.
We're there.
Okay?
Yep.
So R5.
He's not here.
It's going to be R5.
Yes.
So you can have, I believe, like a home-based business?
Yes, yes.
You just can't have a business?
But it's no longer commercial.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
Residential.
So you can't have a sign out for it.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I guess I'll move to table the Ordinance 2022-1923 to the July 11th, 2022 council meeting at 7:00 p.m.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Ambeline?
Yes.
Ms. Greenfield?
Yes, I think you were.
Mr. McReedy?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Um, yes.
Mr. Ramaro?
Yes.
Ms. Amer?
Yes.
All right. Al, would you like to move the next orders?
Just want to read the whole thing, right?
Yes.
Good. I move that Ordinance 22-1920-1924, Bond Ordinance Providing for the Acquisition of Property Located at 65 Norristown Road In and By the Borough of Burnsville in the County of Somerset, New Jersey, Appropriating $1,500,000, Therefore, and Authorizing the Issuance of $1,430,000 Bonds or Notes of the Borough for Financing Such Appropriation Be Introduced by Title Passed on First Reading, Published According to Law, And That a Public Hearing Be Scheduled for Meeting Beginning at 7:00 p.m., Monday, July 11th, 2022.
Second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstained.
Abstained.
Oh, that's right, you two, anything finance, yeah. Pause.
Just pause.
All right, you want to introduce the next one?
Sure, I'll move that ordinance 2022-1925, bond ordinance providing improvements to the open space properties in and by the borough of Bernadette, the county of Somerset, New Jersey, appropriating $4 million, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $3,800,000 bonds or notes of the borough for financing such appropriation be introduced by title passed by first reading, published according to law, and a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 p.m., Monday, July 11, 2022.
Second.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, let's do some clarifying points in the public, I'm just glad.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask about, and Tom ran out of me the appropriate person. Can you explain, like, we don't anticipate using the entire, the entire bond?
We have a substantial balance in the active portion of the open space project. We also anticipate that it's gonna grow over the years by which we start implementing this plan. So it's likely that no bond will need to be issued, or no debt will actually have to be issued. But you have to do this ordinance to essentially encumber those bonds. So finance knows that we're not spending them on anything else other than what is in this ordinance.
Yeah.
As they come about.
It's more procedural than anything else. But the actual funds will be the open space money that we're using.
And I think there's a couple of important points there, just for the public. And if anyone disagrees with anything I say, feel free. So we're going to, through RFP, get all of these different items bid out best price, do it efficiently, and find the right contractors and the right work. We'll scale it so that way that there's little bond impact. And if there is bond impact, it'll be short-term bond impact. We'll essentially loan ourselves money through various means. But this ordinance itself allows us to have shovel-ready jobs that we can apply for next year. So this also allows us to move the project forward faster. And it'll be the responsible ability of this council to ensure governance of the money and fiscal thoughtfulness as we walk through this process.
Yeah. Yep. So whatever debts incurred will be paid with the money we've already collected in open space tax. So there's no real debt for, additional debt for the public.
Yes, sir. Okay. And there might be a circumstance, I'm looking forward to maybe, you know, we're in a fiscal calendar year, and we have a bucket of money coming in January. We make up a short-term bridge loan, which we can take, I believe, directly from funds that we have already in the bank. So it doesn't even have to be a new, that's a correct statement, right, Tom? So it doesn't have to be new issuance, it can just be borrowed from ourselves through different ways.
And Mayor, just during my report, I intended to give you a little update on next steps.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. So, did we have a second? Yes, yes. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope, abstention. The two abstentions, yes. Okay.
We need to make sure that everyone else is here for your...
I am for all the summer.
Yes, July 11.
For adoption, we need four.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, we need four?
For adoption of the bond, we need two-thirds of the required.
Or you guys have to change jobs.
Yeah. Darian, you want to move the next one?
I move that ordinance 2022-1926 concerning fines for ordinance violations and amending Article 2 of the Borough Code entitled Administration and Article 16 of the Borough Land Development Regulation, regulations entitled Violations and Penalties Be Introduced By Title Passed on First Reading, Published According to Law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 p.m., Monday, July 11, 2022.
I'll second.
Okay. And is this another kind of redoing language thing?
Yes, state law allows fines of up to $2,000 for ordinance violations. Because I'm gonna buy that in cases of zoning or housing violations, if the fine is gonna be more than $1,750, the property owner has to be given 30 days' notice. So this just clarifies that in the ordinance that all zoning violations don't require 30 days' notice. There's only those that...
1500.
$1,750.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may add, this has to do with enforcement, portions of this have to do with enforcement of overgrown yards and weeds. And this severe penalty plus the 30 days, it's kind of rendering our efforts not as effective as it could be. So this will give us a little more flexibility to jump on those problems.
Great. Good, thank you. Did I miss that message?
Yeah, we have them both around here.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I miss that? We just...
We had a motion in seconds.
Okay, sorry, so just all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Good. All right, sorry, go ahead.
We're on Morrison Road, correct?
Yes.
I move that ordinance 22-1927, ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property located at 65 Morristown Road and identified as Block 124 lot 13 for public purposes, introduced by title passed on first reading, published according to law, and a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning 7:00 p.m., Monday, July 11, 2022.
Second. Comments? Questions?
Do we wanna just give a rundown of the reasons or not yet? Or wait till the public hearing?
Maybe Mr. DeMarco could just summarize quickly.
Sure. What do you want to know?
The acquisition of 65 Morristown Road, just what the, what we're doing here.
Sure. So Joan Walker, for the record, at Burnetville.
And our redevelopment attorney.
Yes, I was getting that.
I'm sorry.
So the good news was, this council previously designated a developer for that site, 65 Morristown Road Redevelopment LLC. Usually what they name themselves is usually the property address. It is the owner of the Claremont Distillery that currently operates in Fairfield, looking to relocate here. The double good news is the owner is a local resident also, somebody who will drive by every day and we care more about property than somebody who would be acting. The goal is that the easiest way to deal with this transaction, because the property has been sitting vacant without ever coming to a conclusion, was for the town to step in and take some action to guarantee the purchase. And that's what the ordinances are today and the bond ordinance that was introduced. It puts the town in a place where they can close on the deal. The goal is not for the town to ever take full ownership of it. It is, the contract has a division that would allow the borough to assign that to the developer. They would step in your shoes, they would purchase the property. It's just really facilitated. Question everyone asks, well, then why are you doing all that? It just provides a level of guarantee, right? Easiest way to describe it, you kid wants to buy a car, has a first job, really wants to do it, everybody's great. Car dealer says, "Can you get your mom to co-sign?" "Can you get your mom to co-sign?" You're co-signing, right? You're stepping in just to be there as the comfort to say, "Okay." The seller now is in a better place, much more comfortable, that can be put into their place. The purchaser is comfortable that they're dealing with us and they need to work through the zoning and any other amendments. So we're in the middle because it just makes sense to get the project moving forward. Any questions on that?
Nope.
No, excellent. Just, thank you, thank you. Yeah. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. All right, moving on to resolutions, any that we want to pull out besides the one that's already pulled out? Or ask questions on?
Just mentioned 145, and then I didn't know if 148, if everyone had gone through and if everyone's okay with that, or do we need to pull that one out?
Is that consistent, 148 is consistent with what we've done in the past? In terms of, I read the...
This is the gap.
We have to approve every single one that comes through. So we put the...
Escrow.
Yeah, escrow and, I guess, I don't know.
We changed those escrow requirements, was it last year?
Not just that, but the standard of repair is elevated, specified at a pretty high level.
And there's essentially a fine.
Yeah, it's a 3x5 square right in front of their house. And they're like the first house on the street.
And we asked John down, he said that it was consistent, so...
Okay, good. So as long as everybody's okay, then we'll keep that one in. And then just wanted to thank Andrew Flood for membership in the fire company. We love our volunteers, thank you.
I hear that siren and I think of you guys all the time. Getting out of bed, getting off the couch.
And then the last question I had, 22-152, do we have an idea of what kind of equipment we're talking about there? Access Department of Defense equipment?
I assume they publish a list of what they have available and then they can pick from the list, is that...
And I think the council would have to authorize it.
Oh, we would? So this is...
Before you accept.
Yeah, this is just that we have to authorize it.
Well, if they, if they could purchase it in their budget, it would come up again within their budget, is that...
You would still have to authorize it too.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just for them to participate in this.
Got it, okay.
Process. Anything else? Jack, 22-149, the resolution of need that refers to the...
That RPM needs to, you know, to apply for the tax credits, we're saying that, you know, tax credits are needed as part of our report of housing department.
And that applies to the Ammerman lot?
It applies to, it applies to two family, it applies to all three of the SCAD sites as well.
Okay.
Mayor, I can just...
Yes.
Just wanted to reflect on some past experience with the surplus. Community, I would say, before we were able to acquire a generator, a surplus generator.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, and as well as a Humvee. That we used to get into difficult areas.
Do we have a Humvee? I thought we had one.
We do actually have one.
I thought so.
I'm sure we need another one.
Yeah, right? Never can have enough Humvees.
So there's probably, 22-153, I think it's great that we're able to send police officers to this and go through the, it's a lot of Portland foundation.
Yeah.
Win-win.
Yeah, it took quite a while to get that foundation set up because we were waiting for the official letter from the IRS that we were 501(c)(3). But there are people waiting in line to make donations to this foundation. So I think this will be a big help. And thank you, Tom, for bringing this idea to us and getting it started. And Jack?
Jack did the...
Jack, yes, did all, did the 501(c)(3) application, so...
Thank you.
I think that'll be a big help. And it keeps it separate from the police actually having to ask for donation or be, feel obligated to someone donating. They will have no idea who's giving money, they just get to spend it. So it's really a great way to handle that.
We filed the application in October, it's been IRS until June.
Really? October to June? They're almost as bad as New Jersey Transit.
This is one of those things that when word gets out, we have a baby seat. You know, if the word gets out that it's a great place to work, that they support these sort of things, and go forward and keep going.
Yeah, great. Thank you. All right, would someone like to move Resolutions 22-141 through 153?
I move that Resolutions 22-141 to 22-153 be adopted.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ambly?
Yes.
Mr. Springfield?
Yes.
Mr. McReedy?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. Ramaro?
Yes.
Ms. Amer?
Yes.
Okay, the next is the non-consent resolution 22-154. And this is to ask the planning board to do an investigation to determine whether a property on Claremont Road can be included in the area in need of redevelopment. This is, I guess I can explain this, right? That it's...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. No, actually, a developer has purchased what was the old Griffin and Howe and 56 Degrees and wants to put them together as one project. However, the Griffin and Howe is in the redevelopment plan and the 56 Degrees is not, which means there's two separate zoning requirements for each property. So the idea is to ask the planning board if they think it makes sense to include 56 Degrees in that area.
And just to build on this, while this is there, we may, as everyone may or may not be familiar, we may not know, the property in the corner also has some questions in regards to... So it's gonna be worth looking at the planning board level if there's a broader application.
So if you can read the, Captain, you're absolutely correct. If you read the last two sentences, it also authorized the planning board to appear an amendment to the pre-land redevelopment plan. But I...
You're always thinking ahead, Joe.
But I limited it to subsection 6, right? Okay, what does that mean? That means the properties on Claremont and the properties that straddle...
The stream.
The stream, right? Not pre-land proper, right? Not where movie theater is or anything else. Just really to look at that Mill Street property, the planning board wanted to look at that and Griffin and Howe, and just, so this gives them that ability.
All right, any other questions? Or, okay, if someone would like to move it?
I'll move Resolution 22-154 be adopted.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Amer?
Yes.
Mr. Ramaro?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. McReedy?
Yes.
Ms. Springfield?
Yes.
Mr. Ambly?
Yes. So just, Anthony, can you just make sure that Frank's aware of that? That language that Joe was pointing out, because I missed it.
Okay.
And if you can just make sure Frank's aware of that.
Yeah, I will do that.
Thank you.
All right. No reports, Mayor's update, they'll be happy to know it's short. We did have a meeting with the developers of Griffin and Howe and 56 Degrees, the land use committee, which kind of led to this discussion about the redevelopment plan. I attended the Somerset County Stigma Free meeting. The committee held a very successful mental health conference for laypeople and professionals. And right now, we're working on trying to get more businesses signed on as stigma-free. And just a reminder, September is Suicide Prevention Month, so we will be working with community and crisis to get some events done for that. June 18th, I did the ribbon cutting at Wellbred, the new pet store in the King Shopping Center. If you haven't been in there, it's a fabulous store. The people there are very knowledgeable. Excuse me, they all go through to at least 20 hours of training on all their products and health conditions of different pets. So well worth visiting if you have a pet. We had on the 20th our, I think it's the 14th, Outstanding Community Volunteer Awards Ceremony, which I think was really well-received. We had probably 40 people attending. We held it in the theater, it was just, it was really a great event, I think, and very much appreciated. I am also a member of the Somerset County Office on Aging, and I attended a service audit at Adult Protective Services. And the more I spend on this committee, we are very lucky to live in Somerset County. Somerset County has so many services compared to other counties. We really outshine what we offer our residents. I did have a request from, and I don't know her last name, it was just Pamela Jean, wanting to do a free little library at the train station park. And I know that had come up a while ago about the free little libraries. Evidently, I know you brought that up. There was one, there is one at Pleasant Valley Park that she said was very well-received, where...
There's two in town.
Where in town?
Three, actually.
People's, have them in their yards?
In front of people's homes.
Really?
Yep. As long as it's, um, the, the conclusion to people having them in town was that as long as it could be relocated if necessary.
Yeah.
Um, and not any kind of hindrance to, you know, the usual.
Yeah, it can't be in the right of way.
Right. So there's three.
Okay, well, uh, this was, she was looking at as a project for the community kindness club that I believe is in the middle school, at the middle school, I think.
That would be good for the Ed English area that we're doing.
Yeah, um, and they would do it all through volunteers and donations, but they just wanted, she wanted to know if the borough would allow it on, in the park.
Like near the, um.
Yeah, it's good. I, I think it would be great for, um, the little place we're gonna designate as Ed English because he was very supportive of the library.
Yep.
So that might be part of what we do in that section. Yes? What do you think? You know, if, if you're open to it, I'll have her, you know, kind of give us a proposal of how and what, what it'll look like and, yeah.
Yeah, good.
Okay, I will get back to her on that. Thank you. Tom?
Yes, Mayor, just three quick things. Uh, first of all, on behalf, on behalf of myself and the staff, like the bank council for supporting the salary rate we're using and by extension, the taxpayers of the community for allowing us to work here and supporting our salaries. It's really appreciated. So thank you. With respect to the progress master plan, um, our rec director of, uh, Mark met with the various schools, uh, heads of record to talk about the pavilion. Got some really good, uh, guidance and we convey that to the, uh, to suburban engineers today. In our call today, we asked them, uh, suggested and we all agree that the recommended next step is to get a quote from them to handle the design, project management, bid administration to extend the utilities. Um, so that would include gas, sewer, water and electric, uh, so that can take care of both the lights and the field house. Um, and as a matter of fact, it's something we should do before we even start working on a path. So we don't want to hang up a path and we're going to all that. So we just think that's a priority. Uh, however, uh, we can't really get to that design until we finalize the layout and site layout here for the building. And so they will be working on that in earnest. And I'll ask them to come to the July meeting to present what we think we gathered from the various schools first.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
And just to give you a heads up, one of the things that we were looking at, uh, because of all the comments we received about the expanded pavilion, um, we asked them to think of designing, uh, keeping with a little gazebo that's in the corner next to the transport, making that whole area a covered pavilion area.
Ooh.
Long to match.
Right.
Both the other pavilion, uh, just as a bid option to have that.
Yeah, I love that. Cool.
Which might also require workers.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's, that's that. And, uh, lastly, um, I asked the chair of our, of our environmental group and, uh, chair of the housing zoning community, uh, if we could do a little brainstorming this week on, uh, some best practices around the no-mo main living room.
Yeah.
And kiss.
For next year.
For, for next year, but some residents have actually extended that as a bit of a permanent feature. Uh, but have done, but have done it quite responsibly. Um, and so we just want to talk about that. So we may come in key with some, uh, ideas.
Great. Yeah, I mean, the concept is great. It's just having some kind of controls on it.
Best practices.
Yeah. So thank you.
And I think Jack had some.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just have one thing to add to my, uh, my report, and it has to do with RPM, kind of RPM plan. But they're rushing their application, uh, before the planning board because they have to get everything done in order to apply for tax credits this year. Because they're three separate properties, uh, their escrow deposit amounts to thirty-eight thousand dollars. And if you may, you may not all be clear, but when you file an application for planning board, there's an application fee, and then there's an escrow deposit that covers the cost of the borough planner, the borough, the board attorney, the board engineer and everything. They, they necessarily have to reduce to fifteen, uh, because it's really just one application. Uh, it would certainly replenish it if it gets depleted. Uh, in this case also, John Zabo, the board planner, as well as the borough planner, wrote the ordinance. Uh, so these are the two years of the application. Uh, so I don't see any harm in it, but you know, I'm trying to be authoritative to grant that. So if that's okay with you, to be just a tribute by motion to reduce their combined escrow deposit for the application, but as I say, it's all probably the same. It's fifteen thousand that they need to replenish.
That last piece is the critical piece for me. So on, so long as we have the provision to replenish the escrow that's used.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move what Jack said.
Yeah.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. That it, Tom? Thank you. Okay. Uh, you have the other department reports. I noticed we didn't get animal control this month. Um, that was missing, but, um, zoning, boy, has Renee been busy with her crew. Did you look through the zoning report? It was, she's done so many, I mean, they really have gotten, and especially their, um, thank, if you could thank them for staying ahead of the weeds this year. So they are letting people know ahead of time that, you know, on their sidewalks, about keeping the weeds down on the way to downtown, um, rather than punishing them later. I think that was, that was terrific on her part.
To that point, um, Tom, I haven't said this yet, but I'll say it now. I know we talked very early on in the year about prioritizing spend in ways consistent. Downtown looks really nice right now. This is usually the time of year where we're all complaining about weeds, about things that are broken, about these paper stones. Very, I've noticed, so thank you.
And it's, uh, combined efforts of zoning and public works.
Yeah.
And the garden club?
And downtown Gardensville.
And public work?
Yeah.
Yeah.
New trash cans.
Yeah, the trash cans look really good, too. Yeah, that made a difference.
I'm beyond happy about the trash.
Let's talk trash. I was glad I was at public works anymore for that one.
Uh, do I have a motion to accept the departmental monthly reports?
I'll move to accept minutes of the reports.
Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, public safety.
Um, I brought up everything in the last meeting, so that was the letter for the NJDOT, um, to encourage a funding.
Our walkway?
Yeah. Was that, um, is, is that finished or is that still in progress? We know you would have had to have signed it, so. It's in progress? Okay.
Yeah.
You said it's in there.
Chris Douglas doing that, right?
So, yeah, so that'll come to you. Uh, I think Chief Valentine was writing it.
Is it on it?
Hmm, I don't know. On the, I can't see.
Sometimes he does.
Oh, and, uh, no, it's not.
Um, but yeah, so that was from the last meeting and then the traffic studies, which I took the takeaway to, to connect with Chad for, from a planning board perspective. That was it for public safety.
All right. All right. Yes.
You didn't do it.
You didn't. Right. Um, personnel.
We didn't meet either, I don't think, since last meeting?
Since your last meeting, right? We got it right before last week.
Yeah.
Public works. Well, here she goes.
Public work is met on June twenty-first. Uh, the borough engineer was also in attendance for part of the meeting. The committee discussed the ongoing mountaintop drainage issue, which we will be going, uh, a formal bid will be prepared and advertised for that, which was approved this evening. Uh, Burns Avenue, residents, resident notices were mailed informing residents that the project's been rescheduled for bidding in November twenty-twenty-two with construction to begin in March twenty-twenty-three as weather permits. Residents thinking of changes in utilities are encouraged to plan on doing so while the road is open. Sidewalks, Old Army Road and Lower Child's Road, contact, concept plans and estimates were reviewed. Changes made by the committee to the Child's Road concept plan will be reviewed. Uh, a meeting has to be set up with the county because it's a county road to review that. Uh, Claremont Road pedestrian signage, uh, input was received from Somerset County engineer regarding the type of solar signage placement of the signage and the need for an MOU, which is a memorandum of understanding between the borough and the county for the future maintenance of the signage.
Can I just say, is that the five corners?
Yes.
Yes.
And we're in the process of obtaining pricing for the signage. Twenty-twenty-two millon page, work, uh, schedule is, has been confirmed, anticipated start date of July seventeenth. Streets included in the twenty-twenty-two millon page are Post Kennel Road from Douglas Avenue to Far Hills, Lower Douglas Avenue from Route two oh two to ninety-three Douglas, Ripley Brook Road the entire length, uh, Bell Terrace, Davis Street and Borough's Avenue, Ammar Place, White Neck Road, and Mount Harmony Road from Route two oh two to north of Lakeview Drive. Uh, as always, residents will receive notification from the borough as to when the work will be done on their street. The pickleball court, work is underway. The retaining wall is completed, landscaping and grading are still to be done. Uh, there have been supply chain and weather delays that have impacted progress of this project. And finally, the Polo Grounds walking path, uh, looking to bid the work late in twenty-twenty-two with construction to begin early twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you.
You're gonna send that to George. He was on vacation for Thursday.
Well, good that you listed the roads.
Yeah.
Again, going back to the utility thing. If you're thinking of switching to gas.
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if we notified them to not only the Burner Dug.
That's what the letter usually says?
Yeah, letters. It says that.
And it's out.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you.
I'll try to tell people that, too. Carrie, try to tell people that.
I'm sorry?
By Ripley Brook, yeah, before they pave it, if they wanted to switch to gas, now is the time to do it.
I, I don't, you know, to make sure that people know because watching utilities back up on themselves on two oh two and then, you know, when the gas company came through, some of those, like a kindergarten, it could have done that, you know, right on two oh two, those big rectangular.
Yes.
So I'm glad to hear that we're gonna.
She said that that was in the letter.
Can we say, yeah, can we say the letter? Yes.
It was in the letter that was sent to the, well, I don't know about that.
It always goes to them before, always, and it always has. This is way in advance, so.
Would you just make sure?
Definitely some chance.
That we sent the letter? That they sent the letter and it includes the, if you're going to do gas and sewer during now?
Okay. I'll ask, uh, Doug.
Yeah, because usually we send a letter just a, a week before, which isn't enough time.
Right.
Because it's just a notification that we're gonna be paving streets, so we have to do it soon. Maybe, you know, I, it might be a good idea to list the roads that are coming up on the website and like with an overall announcement.
That's a good idea.
You know, that this is what we're gonna do and if you are planning on changing utilities or whatever.
Move fast.
Yeah, and also put it on our Facebook page.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It happens very often. And with oil prices, the way they're going.
People will be switching. Yeah. Um, land use committee, I don't think we've met since a while. Um, any committee or commission reports, liaison reports?
Um, no, man. So just to add on to what Tom is mentioning for the recreation committee, well, in a wonderful way, Bob Mark with the committee is well ahead on finances this year. Not that I always focus on finance, but those things always, they're, they're well ahead, I, I want to say by tens of thousands of dollars, correct, Tom?
Yeah.
Five, five hundred, back to a hundred percent. Over where you were last week.
So congratulations to them. And also to iterate, I, I think the, the recreation base is really pleased with direction. Um, I think there's some fine tuning that we need to have as we go along the way. Um, so I'm looking forward to that process. Uh, planning board did meet last week. It was in the middle of, like, actually before the middle of the district baseball game. Um, so districts are now over. Uh, there was an issue, it's very complicated the way that various zoning maps now overlay one another from the Quinby Lane, et cetera, et cetera. So there will be some, um, further discussion on the Mill Street Claremont property. Um, I also believe that we are rescheduling the, um, discussion about the Palmerdole Lane for next month.
Fourteen?
Yeah, July fourteenth.
So just so the public's aware that that will be spent.
Mayor?
Uh, Housing Property Maintenance and Zoning Enforcement Advisory Committee met on June eighth. Uh, we continue discussion on enforcement of the borough sign ordinance, ordinance and fence ordinance draft was sent to council for review. Um, it's in, moving this on the agenda. Open Space, uh, did meet, H pack meets tomorrow. Um, also the mayor's trails committee, I have an update. Um, tree markers have come in and members of the committee will mark Peters Track Trail sometime this week. Uh, the committee will hopefully hold its official first meeting, um, this week as well. Buildings and ground crew weed whacked Peters Track Trail and roads department cleared vines and dead trees across the trail. Uh, the building and grounds crew also weed whacked the Laurelwood Round Top, uh, trail, which was significantly overgrown. And the committee will be putting trail and parking information, uh, about the Peters Track and the Laurelwood and Round Top Trails on the borough website with information on other existing Burner Dug trails to follow.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have committee meetings? Okay. Um, actually, I had a question. Um, did John McDowell call you about the logs across Peters Park?
Yes.
Whether, yeah.
Um, one is removed, one was notched. Good.
Yeah, he talked about notching and I thought that was a great idea.
So that people can't go down with cars, right?
Yeah.
People can't go down there with cars?
With ATVs.
ATVs, yeah.
Yeah.
Which is good. Um, great, thank you. Uh, we didn't have any correspondence, I don't believe. Um, any unfinished business? New business? We do have the, uh, fence ordinance. Um, did, did you get comments? I think you asked for them last time.
I got, um, a comment and I got two questions. And I did forward everything to the committee. Um, but if anybody wants to ask a question about it, I don't know what anybody's thoughts are.
I mean, I, I, go ahead.
Oh, I'd, I'd ask the question about the, the zones, the one back there, I don't know what I got. The front lot, front, front yard, so the front yard fences.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was the way I answered you to that.
Okay.
I just said I was gonna double check to make sure I, I didn't miss it.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I didn't get my question answered.
I, I think they had perimeter, too, didn't you?
It's a perimeter fence, yeah. I, I did answer your question, Alice, I sent you an email. I don't remember. I don't remember the question.
You forwarded my question.
I forwarded your question, but then I answered your question.
Okay, I didn't see that.
I did answer it and then I said I was gonna forward it in case there was anything that the committee wanted to add.
I'll go back and check then.
Okay. Well, it's, it says perimeter instead of perimeter. Yeah, it's a perimeter. Right. Um, and Christine, the setbacks, the idea of the measurements was to have uniform front, um, yard fence setback throughout the borough and that, that it would give room for pedestrians to walk in front of the properties, um, and also would allow in case we, there are future sidewalks go there, it would allow space to put a future sidewalk. That was the reason for the, um, the setback numbers. You, you had a question concerning the, the distance.
But we can't put sidewalks in unless in the right of way. So merely requiring a ten-foot setback.
Still doesn't give you enough room for a sidewalk?
Well, they have room, but we don't want to, so we can't, we can't put it there.
Still not, it's still your property even though you can't put a fence on it.
The right of way, then we are in the right of way. For the, the borough owns the road.
Well, the right of way is not ten feet. This is what it says. Fences must be constructed within property lines of a lot. You get that, right? You can't put a fence on somebody else's property. Fence is bordering a street, so you, if you live on the street and you want to put a fence in front of your house, must be built at least ten feet from the edge of the street pavement. Or if there's a sidewalk along the edge of the street, when the fence is constructed, it should be two feet from the inner edge of the sidewalk. So my thinking is, is like the houses in downtown area, a lot of them are, not a lot, but some of them already have the fence or all the way up to the sidewalk.
Or they'd be grandfathered, you know. Anybody with a fence existing would be grandfathered.
But I don't see a problem with that.
With it being right on the sidewalk.
Like, I've, I've never had a wish for that.
Rules for somebody to walk.
Yeah. We also have another ordinance that allows obstructions. It actually came up in the context of boulders on the mountain. People were putting boulders in the right of way. But it also covers fences that says, they can be in the right of way as long as they don't present a safety hazard in the opinion of the post department.
Right. The boulders are not allowed, are they?
They are.
Oh, I thought they weren't allowed.
They don't constitute a safety hazard.
Ah, well, how do they not, how do they not constitute a safety hazard if somebody has to go over the side of the road to avoid an oncoming truck? They're gonna ram the car into a giant molder, especially if it's snow covered.
I was saying, that's, that's what happened to me that a few years ago.
I thought that, I thought we weren't allowed to do that. I thought people weren't told that they didn't do that anymore.
Yeah, but I ended up giving the discussion to the police chief and he had a determination.
Okay.
So like the other spot that this makes me think of is the cemetery at, on the corner of Anderson.
Yes.
And we lived here when somebody like plowed right through it. It happened twice.
Mm-hmm.
A car literally like went right through the fence. So my thinking is like, if that was a house, at least I would want the fence to be as far away as possible. So if somebody's gonna ram into it and like come on my foot lawn, you know, shoulder down. I, I don't know, just, I don't see why it needs to be two feet in if you have a small front yard as it is.
Probably just because it looks.
Tom, you would feel?
Yeah, it was, it was my idea.
Tom!
So, um, so if you, um, there's these like standard codes that are put out by like, uh, the organizations like the Congress for Urban Zones or the Media Traditional Neighborhood Design. So the idea is ideally you have at least a five-foot walkway for grass strip, then a five-foot sidewalk. And then, um, if you think of places like, uh, let's imagine like the Antipathy or other areas, they have a little planning area for foxwoods and stuff and a fence behind it. So it's sort of based on that kind of ideal, uniform, clean, like little streets ready and off of your downtown, uh, what that should look like, but it's not essential.
Yeah, I mean, I, and I don't want to be nitpicky either, but I just.
And you know, Jack, Jack and I were just talking, um, we, we were wondering, it'd be a shame if someone has to go get a variance if they couldn't comply due to, the oddity of their lot. So maybe if we can think about building some flexibility in the zoning officer, or, or the fence can be completely beyond the sidewalk or up to.
Well, just up to, yeah, not beyond.
My, my personal opinion is for something like a fence ordinance, my opinion is that's in general not a planning board item. I, I think at the zoning officer level, they should have some flexibility inside what makes the best sense for the neighborhood. If we can.
Do we need this?
It's like worth saying, but we're trying to avoid.
Do we need the fence ordinance? I mean, I guess.
That was my next question.
Having driven around Burnersville and seen the mesh of fences all over the place, in all different locations, all different everything. It's to try to make some kind of unification in the borough, a standard. And there's no way, we have to give the zoning department something to go on, to some kind of standard to, to, to have.
So, what, what, I guess, yeah, so my questions were, what's the catalyst for this? And do we have different, will we have different fencing requirements based on your residential zoning, right? So, house in the mountain versus house on Burner's Ave?
Yes.
So, how do we, what's here?
Certain, well, because if you, if you read through it, certain areas are for just zones three, four, and five. And the rest of it is for all zones. It depends on, you know, where the zone, where you are.
So, you're talking about when you say zones three, four, and five, we're talking about? What?
I'm talking about.
The height.
Close to town. I'm talking about not quite over the line. I didn't mean to do that. Sorry.
So, if, if I may just like add a couple of thoughts, and we can keep this on and keep working on it, of course, but it's really rare that a county doesn't have a zoning, a fence ordinance. I don't think ever work in one that doesn't. And we do get some complaints, let's say, you have a chain fence that's five feet tall and the zoning office really has no guidance on how to adjust that complaint. And I think we can all agree, you know, it kind of takes away from that point downtown feel. You're trying to create areas that reading off of the downtown, you know, with a strict standard for now. So, it would be grandfathered, you know, no one would be compelled to replace their fence. But now that people want to do a current yard fence, there'd be certain styles that are encouraged and heights that are regulated and setbacks that are regulated, which doesn't happen right now. And it makes the planning of sidewalks very difficult.
To not have a fence on them.
Yeah. I know when we did this, Jack, you remember, was it in the nineties?
Yes, I do.
And went round and round and finally said, we're not doing it.
Round and round and away.
Well, this has been worked on for like a year.
Yeah, and I respect the fact that there's a lot of thought that's been put into it and it's very well written, so it's not that. I, my gut is always that these blanket ordinances sometimes have unforeseen consequences. And maybe this one has been all the i's and the dotted t's crossed, but I just want to spend some time thinking about it just to make sure.
Yeah.
Like, what problem is it so?
Right. And what is the catalyst? It's helpful to hear they're having complaints.
Yeah, and we can always amend it. If we come up against something that's not working, you know, we can go back and revise it.
I think it's helpful to think to, you know, got to be near the fire now, such as the year ago, or some investor comes in, says, let me take these properties, strip them down and go through the homecoming. I think it'd be very helpful then to have a uniform standard for what a fence should be in that circumstance. Whereas one doesn't exist and in fact you couldn't, you could not impose standards on it.
There's some really cute fences right up against the sidewalk. They look nice.
So.
But it has to be the right.
Maybe some ugly ones too.
So, what are we doing? What are we going to do now? Just, what's the next step? Anybody?
If council wants to proceed, we can put it into an ordinance form because this was the committee's language.
Why don't we do that and then with the public hearing, invite people to comment and see what residents think of it?
Can we also, Jack, put in something, giving the zoning department discretion as to setbacks maybe or something?
Definitely, no, we could try it.
What if you said?
Well, I was just trying to give them a little bit of leeway if somebody wants to do, you know, a little closer, like within, you know, a couple of feet or whatever, but I, I wanted them to have some kind of a leeway so people can have their concerns.
It would be a shame if you were to go to the board to go there and.
Yeah. And a lot of it is.
The planning board's busy enough, we started seeing fence.
No, that would be.
Port of adjustment.
But, you know, it would vary based on the property and the aesthetics of the property, how big it is, how small it is. If somebody next door has a fence and one's out here and one's back here. So, there are, there is a lot of, you know, flexibility that you need to have.
I'll plug it into the ordinance for the next meeting and we'll be talking about it and introduce it if it's ready, if not, we'll add it to the next following.
Yeah, thanks, Jack.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Is this going to be done over the summer? It'll be introduced in July and past August?
Oh, no, we're not doing that.
I think as part of this, because, you know, fences don't last as long as houses, which typically are grandfathered, right? We need to have some discussion and or communication as to what the period of grandfathering is. If I'm replacing a fence that was there because it's damaged and needs replacement, does that now have to go back?
No, it's grandfathered.
I think we should.
Under this, if that's grandfathered, you're replacing a segment of your fence.
Even if you replace the whole thing?
No, if you're replacing the whole thing.
So, they're subject to the same requirements as any non-conformant structure, so that if you take it down, that doesn't give you the right to replace it, gives you the right to repair.
Does that create a?
Like a non-conforming building, if it burns down and it's only seven percent, you can repair it, but if it burns to be burned, you can't replace it.
But, but that's the, that's the piece that I would look at is the unintended consequence because a building is, and maybe there are examples of this that I'm not aware of, but a building is something that may not be as easy to repair. I, when I look at a fence, are we going to have a bunch of fences in town where someone says, I replaced ninety-five percent of it and I left this little ugly section just so I could keep the fence where I have it? And you're, you got a lot of gamesmanship going on with that. I, I just, I, seriously, I mean, people are just going to go in and say, hey, I just fixed it.
And defenses last five to ten years max.
So, can you set a, an absolute, like you're not going to grandfather it after ten years or?
And we ought to require a permit for major repairs because it's a judgment call. You know, and towns, with respect to other non-conformant structures, towns try to put in a percent, more than thirty percent, of course they can't do that. But substantial.
Substantial.
So, there is some judgment.
And this is only a perimeter fence. This isn't if you have a fence in your backyard kind of thing that doesn't, like for the pets or whatever.
Garden fence.
Yeah.
And it also refers to a design guidebook. Did we get that or?
No, I guess that too. No, that was another idea by.
We're working on it, we're working on it.
If you wanted to go with doing an ordinance, then the committee would put together a design book to give people an idea of what they could, could do, not what they had to do, but what.
Glad you guys have so much time on your hands.
I don't have anything else to do.
That I think we need to consider, because I know deer fencing is covered in this. I'll give you an example. A deer ran through my rear fence over the weekend. I'm fixing, I go to Home Depot, get more deer fencing, I put the deer fencing back up. I'm not, I'm not getting a permit.
No, nobody cares, and nobody cares about that.
Well, it's in here in Scotland, right?
Only if you were going to do a perimeter deer fence.
If you're going to put a deer fence in the front of your yard.
Also in the back though, it has to be.
Well, yeah, okay, on your property line.
So, on my back property line.
If you're not on your property line.
On my back property line, a deer ran right through the fence.
All right, so you didn't hear it. No, you don't need a permit.
I just want to make sure that we're fully clear on what's going through and what isn't.
Wait, do you need a permit for a deer fence?
No.
In general?
Well, this is not a deer fence, it's a perimeter fence. It's a perimeter deer fence. Well, I mean, we butt somebody's backyard in our backyard.
Yeah.
So, would we need a permit or not? Sorry for.
Deer fencing around your perimeter, yes.
Around the whole thing, if you just did the back property line?
Anything butting your property line.
Could you be chain linked? It could be eight feet tall, you know, right?
Yes.
I mean, I have a, I have a fence, but I don't, it's not touching any of my property lines, so I would not have to get a permit. If somebody, if I would put my fence on my property line, then I wouldn't need to get a permit. But I do believe that you have to do that now anyway, but I'm not.
Get around it by saying it's not on your property line.
Well, no, I mean, you have to. Because what they do is they do a site thing to make sure that you're not going on the neighbor's property.
Yeah, you have to have your.
You have to have, if you're on the property line.
A survey done, make sure you're in the right spot.
Yeah.
And if you're not, believe me, your neighbor will tell you.
Depends on which neighbors. If you're in the mountains, they probably have no idea anyway.
I've had to move fences at other houses before because we were over the property line.
Okay, well, let's get it on for the agenda next time and we can.
Send feedback together.
Yeah, and then we will have two weeks of time for the public to comment as well, so people may have their own issues with it, so we'll wait and see.
But just again, I don't know how we deal with the summer, right?
Yeah.
And that one will be July eleventh and then that means it's August.
Right, next one is August eighth.
You know what? Let's, let's do it for August eighth, so that the public hearing is in September.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll introduce it obviously.
Yeah.
Rather than, okay.
That's better.
Yeah, good call.
And then you'll have time to buy the design guide.
Right.
And then the public hearing, then the next thing after that, September twelfth.
Yeah. That'd be good, okay. Any other new business? Okay, we are now having our second open session for the public. So, again, if you would like to speak, please give your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. If you want to speak, just put your hand icon up or wave at us.
Carrie.
Carrie.
Hi, I'm Councilwoman Mayor, Carrie Hazelton, mine of Broke, three nine seven. I just wanted to ask for clarification and I know it says it should be off the agenda, but based on something that was said on ordinance nineteen twenty five, I just wanted to ask about the, there was reference to a bucket of money that is there for development. And I just wanted to find out what that bucket is in terms of the buckets that we have in terms of.
Actually, the interest we earn on the, on the account, we have a trust fund for Open Space.
Right.
And every year we collect, I don't know, eighty thousand, something like that. So, the interest that we earn on that gets, right, can I correct?
It matches that, the actual money that's coming in.
Right.
We have money set aside.
For twenty years, what we have, Open Space, twenty-three maybe now, so for the first ten years, it was a hundred percent for acquisition. And then we made a change and it was eighty percent for acquisition. So, there's a big acquisition kitty that's set aside. So, the money that you were referring to in terms of this new development bond ordinance that we're, you know, working to do big improvements, does that, when you say the bucket of money, are you referring to the money that's been collected since it was a hundred percent?
Yes.
Due for development and the, the acquisition money is still sitting?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yes, that six million or whatever is still there.
That's set aside. And then I know that councils have been wise in terms of figuring out how to acquire properties that we don't necessarily want all of the property and we've set ourselves up well to divest ourselves of historic properties that we didn't want in the first place and got a part for a great price on that. So, you know, that was really well done. But I just wanted to clarify from my own edification, what type of money we're talking about.
We have not used that money we've been collecting for the last three years, maybe?
If council is interested, you can have a small little pre-occupation on the balances and.
That would be good, yeah.
So, we do, because we've been able to get some grants for the work that we have done, like the pickleball courts. We still have, you know, for the last three years, we've been collecting a fairly large sum of money. And we can borrow against that.
Yes.
Right, that's what the bond is.
As well as we could borrow against, for acquisition purposes, with the big challenges.
Yeah, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Carrie. Yes, sir, come on up.
Thank you. Mayor Council, thank you for listening to me. My name's Aaron Delph, I live on Crescent Drive. I apologize, my events is my first meeting, so I'm not really up on procedures. I came here to talk about the bond or the appropriation ordinance for the Open Space bonds. As I understand, that's going to be open to the public hearing on July eleventh. So, my, so I guess I'll wait until then, I'll be back then, but my only comment, I guess, on that is, I don't, I'm not sure whether the way it's being presented to the public on July eleventh is optimal. I think that, you know, you have within this appropriation, four or five different projects going on. You know, and it's just being done in this big omnibus, four million dollar appropriation. I think it would be better beneficial to the public to have each one of those projects separately dealt with when it comes to appropriation, issuing debt. I think it aids in transparency for the, you know, taxpayers to see where their money is being spent, which are these different projects. And I hope it also allows, you know, some accountability, gives the council the opportunity to stand up and say, you know, I'm in favor of this, I'm not in favor of that, rather than saying, well, I like this one thing, but I had to hold my nose and vote for the rest of it. I think that that's, you know, a big part of what the council does, so that's my comment on that. Also, I definitely, like I said, I plan on attending on the eleventh. I, I think it's, you know, very important to have some elaboration on what was discussed tonight about why it's important that the debt be issued if we really don't anticipate ever having to use it. That's obviously better than having to draw on that, that line, but a little fuller explanation, I'm sure there are good reasons, but I'd like to go there. And finally, I had submitted a communication, correspondence prior to the last meeting. And I, when I, when I went to review the recorded meeting online, I saw it kind of, the recording cut out right before the second public session, I guess. So, I wasn't able to see whether my correspondence was considered or responded to. I guess, you know, the thrust of it is, I'll ask now, is, you know, I just wanted to see if there were any updates from committees or groups that had been previously discussed at open meetings and the recorded meetings. The Trails Connectivity Study, that's been referenced over the past several months. And the Trails feasibility study, that's also been referenced. Has there been any, you know, written filings, reports, results of those efforts? I just wanted to ask for an update on that.
I believe they're all on the website, aren't they?
Yeah, so may, may I ask?
Go ahead.
Yes.
So, just much, just to level set, you're familiar with the new master plan, correct? So, that is like, so that's the start, lots of surveys, lots of meetings, big report, lots of presentations. And kind of reflecting where there seemed to be a lot of interest. Trails, the big, maximizing our existing active recreation space, making it more usable was the state. So, a few times we talked about what all that means here. We ran by the Recreation Committee as well. And Council then, again, at a public meeting, authorized suburban engineers to come up with concept plans around those areas. Those were then presented here, they were presented for the Open Space Committee meeting. Further guidance was given as to how to start prioritizing that. With respect to the bond, you know, bonding, there's a cost of bonding, but the fact of the matter is, is under state law, every one of those contracts has to be separated. And council has to, except we contract.
Absolutely, appropriation is already made.
Yes, and that's a really important part for, for me and I think for everyone in the council. To make sure that we're spending tax dollars most appropriately. Each one of these individual pieces, whether it's the trail from point A to point B, to the plumbing, plumbing to lights.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that there's accountability on the backend. I'm looking for a little bit on the frontend, a little more transparency to say, before we even appropriate this money and say this is what we're devoting to this or that, that that's clear to the public, you know, whether it's, you know, two hundred thousand dollars to the trail over at Evan Cow, whether it's, you know, how much money is going to the lighting, how much money is going to the snack facility. I think that's important to do on the frontend, while, you know, of, of course, at the end of the day, you know, the buck stops with the council and, and, you know, and their crews when it comes to making these investments. I think it's important for the public to see on the frontend, before these bills are held and while we're, you know, opening up the public debate, you know, what, what the priorities are. As far as, you know, my, my correspondence about the committees, if, if the, if the references to the trails feasibility and the connectivity studies were referencing, I guess, the work that suburban was doing, is that what you're saying?
No, that was actually, what was their name, the company?
Branstad.
Yeah, Branstad.
But what I'm referencing, what I'm referencing is ongoing work after the publication and adoption of the master plan of these separate committees. If there, if that's just not the case, if there is no Trails Connectivity Study ongoing. or has not been since the time that the master plan was, uh, adopted, that's the answer. But I, I didn't know if there were any additional, um, you know, uh, groups or, you know, I know the mayor's, uh, ad hoc trails committee is involved with implementing some of these, you know, different priorities around trails. But is there anything else going on right now as far as connecting, uh, residents, pedestrian, um, you know, walkway, green spaces? And I do appreciate that the, uh, well, what was, we worked recently, we needed it. Um, but, you know, i- i- is there anything going on to, to try to identify those, um, connectivity improvements that could be made or, or that not necessarily?
So connectivity was important, uh, which is the greatest opportunity for connectivity. And that was discussed in the master plan and various places was, uh, there, there's probably no valuable connection that can be made to the auto bond trail. Because that then connects to the Patriot Ave. So that's a high value connection. And so you saw the, the presentation of that spur. That's what has been connected, polar grounds to the auto bond. Then, uh, council felt it was really important to start making the land set and brought immediately accessible. So when we talked to Suburban, we said, you know, let's look at the trails that you designed from thermal utilities to at least present opportunities for future connections elsewhere. But I will tell you, it is incredible challenge, uh, to find like sidewalks in other areas or even, uh, rights of way that will allow us to access between people's homes. Um, so it's a big challenge and, and I believe I did extend an indication for us to see.
Yes, thank you, I was, I had my family eleven who walked up. I was unavailable, but I appreciate it and I will, uh, take you up in invitation, so thank you very much.
To that point in time, there is a, a trails plan for the property just down the road here. That was part of, well, it's not, two seventy-one.
Just snack, just Crestview.
It's a start.
Yeah.
It's a start, it's a, it's a, you know, looks cheap, but.
So I, I guess the, um, so the answer is, uh, any, um, additional study that's ongoing with respects that connectivity, uh, and trails is being done within the recreation department, there's no other, you know, groups that are putting together any number of.
Uh, it's actually, well, the engineer is, is mainly charged with a lot of that, yeah.
And, and just in respect to the, um, the Evan Cow track and the season one.
Yeah, right, and trails in general. We had contracted with him to do those specific trails and the polar grounds piece. So, uh, what we've done is when he did the presentation of here's his concepts, um, as a professional and how our grading is and what needs to be done. Then it came to the council, we had a public presentation. And then, then it went to recreation and recreation then reached out to the different sports groups and people that use those areas. So we're trying to, to keep people involved, um.
Does the scope of their current, um, engagement with the borough extend to connectivity trails and things that, uh, you were, um, referencing as far as finding those, um, you know, pathways and, um, you know, getting people to these marks without.
It's to and behind.
Is it designed in such a way that doesn't include future connections?
Yeah, it is, it's, it's a big project to do all at once, to get it all. And I know there was in the, um, open space master plan, which was, uh, attached to the master plan. They did lay out, uh, an optional, you know, how you could possibly get from.
Twenty sixteen, is that the?
Uh, yeah, I think it might have been a little after that. But I think that's also on the, the master plan list on our website.
Is that the most recent, I guess?
Yes, it's just about where.
That's the question, so I believe we're past the three minutes.
Three minutes, yeah.
I think if Tom, if you wanna have a conversation with Tom, I'm sure he can give you the, the details about any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Tom, I appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Uh, anyone else? Did you want to say anything else, Carrie?
Uh, no, I just got excited.
Uh, anyone, um, who wish to be heard?
I don't see any hands raised, although I don't have the box for everybody, but, but the participants list, I don't see any hands raised, so.
Okay.
Uh, we have executive session, see you.
Uh, we do have an executive session and will we be coming out?
I don't have anything to go to.
No, I think, uh.
I thought Joe did.
No, we did everything in public.
Oh, and after I see Joe, I figure we're going.
Well, it says it.
We won't share that perhaps the one ordinance that's top resolution has been pulled aside.
Uh, no, yeah, we did it in public, so. Okay, we have nothing for executive?
All motion to adjourn.
Got a second? All in favor?